The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of March 28th. We'll call this meeting to order. First of all, under Presentations, we have none this evening. Could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Vroba, thank you. Counselor Clark, any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, could we have a minute? A minute. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on March 14th? Thank you. Counselor Sernick, seconded by Counselor Frank. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have a request from Coal Country Run on the cycling event on the pathway system on May 14th. We, the organizing committee for Coal Country Run, are writing this letter as a request for permission to conduct a cycling event within city limits on May 14th. As you may be aware, we host an annual 10K, 5K, and Kids Mini Mile running/walking event out in the Woodlawn Park area. This year, we're excited to be adding a cycling event to the lineup, and we intend to utilize the amazing new paths around the exterior of the city. The start and finish will be at Rotary Hall in the park, and the cyclists will make their way up to Buffalo Lookout Pathhead. They will basically proceed around the outside corridor of the city, utilizing the paths and a few city streets where necessary, to work their way back to the Casa Colina Trailhead, and then back to Rotary Hall. This route is almost exactly 20K. We will not require anything at all from the city. As such, accept your approval of our plan. We, as fitness enthusiasts, are extremely grateful and thrilled to have the addition of these safe corridors in our city. We are excited to showcase them to our community, and hopefully, we will have participants from out of town as well that we can show off to. We look forward to hearing back from you in the near future regarding this request. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact us. Debbie Knight and Peggy Rohat. What's the wish of council? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, your worship. I was just wondering if, I think it's a great idea that we do this. I know that they're not biking paths. We've designated them as walking paths due to the width of them, but I think in this instance, definitely, it's a great idea. But we would probably close them off to the general public, just so that, you know, we didn't have cyclists running into a family walking down the path, or something like that.
That's a fair comment. I don't know, city manager, should we run that by Rod? What's your thoughts?
Yeah, your worship, Counselor Vroba. I'd want to talk to Rod about closing the pass down and what the timeline for each section is being used. You'd hate to close it off all day if they're only there for one.
Yeah, and I think they are only there for a certain portion of the day. Like, normally, when these things happen, they start in the morning, they're kind of done by noon, 1 o'clock. And I live in that area. I don't see a lot of traffic down there. But there isn't a lot of places to go. If bikes are coming and you're down in the middle of that trail, you'd be off into a muddy area, maybe, or the bikes would be. So I just think if we're going to let them use it for half a day, it would be my recommendation that we close it off if possible, if, after talking to Rod.
Yeah, and that's a fair comment. And I think if you're okay with it, Counselor Vroba, we'll run it. Jeff will have a conversation with Rod, and we'll come up with a plan.
Yeah, and if it's not recommended that we close it, then I think the least we need to do is put warning signs up that cyclists, because depending on how many people are at this event, you could have 10 or 12 cyclists on that path at the same time, and that would make it kind of a commotion down there if you've got a family running around.
Well, that's a fair comment. We'd want it to be very safe.
But I would make the recommendation that we do allow it for them to use it.
Okay, you'll make that motion? Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolliser, sir?
Thank you, your worship. The other safety concern would be that they are planning to use a few of the city streets. So if we could also have them work with the police to ensure that we do have the appropriate safety measures in place to allow that to proceed.
Good point. Maybe a few barricades and signage.
Where needed.
And that's another good thing. Jeff can talk, city manager can talk to Rod about that. Okay, was that a second or then with those conditions, Counselor Wolliser?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Counselor Frank?
I guess, and I very much agree with what Counselor Vroba and Counselor Wolliser suggested. I personally think the idea of closing it off is the best way to go, too. My other request would just be that we could put up some sort of signage or notice that would be closed off, just so people aren't planning to go for a walk, find out it's closed, just to make sure that we've got ample notice. And it can be as simple as just a nice little sign put up right at the entrance to the park or something like that, or to the walkway a couple days before, so.
Okay, well, we'll have that discussion and get this minutia worked out. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I actually just looked on the registration site right now. There's 45 people signed up for this, so it's a significant number of people, so we should look into that. I agree.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Everyone approved? City clerk? Okay, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have U-15, Under 15, Southeast Sun Devils, request dice run on the pathway system. So, here we are with that. I'm interested in hosting a dice run on the walking path in the city of Estevan. A dice run is like a poker derby, but with dice. There will be a starting point, six checkpoints set up in the walking path where you have the opportunity to roll the dice five times. We are raising money for the new Under 15 Southeast Sun Devils. This is a competitive Southeast girls softball team. The event will be $10 a hand, three hands for $20, or 10 hands for $50. We will have a 50/50 raffle and a silent auction as well. We are hoping to do two Saturdays in April, or one Saturday in April and one in May. The person with the highest hand will receive $300, and the lowest hand will receive $150. We are waiting to get permission and see what the girls have for availability to work this event before we pick the exact dates. We will have a cherry-on-top ice cream truck. I don't think I've ever seen that one, but it sounds interesting, set up on the route. Contestants can walk, run, jog, bike, or scooter. Pets will be allowed on a leash. The event is sponsored by Diamond Skin Solutions and Cash Downhole Anchors. If you have any questions, please contact Kelly McConnell, owner of Diamond Skin Solutions, and Randy Gooding, coach, Under 15 Southeast Sun Devils. We will secure the dates and the route once we receive permission. Leisure services, no. So what's the wish of council on this one? Counselor Ford?
I think since we've already said potentially yes for the 14th, we would tell them yes without, with the exception of that date, is my opinion in that, just so we don't have two events running on the same day or people running into each other.
Okay, good point. And also, Counselor Ford, we'll maybe have the city manager, when he's talking to Rod, discuss any safety concerns on this as well, and then we can cover that off at the same time. Was that a motion, then, to accept?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vroba, questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the cherry-on-top ice cream truck is the one that's at the co-op usually.
Okay.
And she's at the racetrack, and she's been around. She comes to Creighton Lodge once a month during the summer, so I think it's a great idea. I would also just like them to know, and I'm sure they probably already do, but if they're a newer softball team, I'm not sure if they are, just so they know they need a lottery license, that getting permission from the city doesn't allow them to do all of the gambling that they want to do without the lottery license.
Good point.
Yeah.
To be legal, they should get one, that's right.
Right, yeah, just to make sure they have that. But other than that, I think it's a great idea. It sounds like a good fundraiser.
Okay.
And it takes about two and a half, three weeks to get the lottery license, so that's why I'm saying if they want to do the dates too in April, they should maybe move on that quick.
Get after that pretty quick.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, no, I'm good with this. And actually, I'm just looking back, and I hate to go back on the last motion, but I realize that they're actually looking at almost the whole way around the city, so will be quite a lot of pathways that they'll be using, so that might change some of that. But that leads to just a totally different conversation around these two requests, that perhaps maybe the city manager and our parks manager can come up with a little bit of a policy that we can kind of put into place. These two requests are kind of a good example, because they're both a little bit different. Might be something to work off of and think through some of those processes, but something we can put into place so that when these requests come up, I think nobody was really anticipating for all these fundraisers to want to come up and happen on our pathways, but it's a good thing. I don't think we want to shut them down, but we should probably have some sort of
Yeah, good point.
policy in place of how we want to react to them, what kind of criteria we want.
Yeah, put some parameters.
Yeah, something there.
And we'll flesh those out as we move forward.
And then something we can guide off of, too, just so we know what to put in. So obviously, new pathways means new challenges, so things for us to figure out, so.
Absolutely, yep. Good. Okay, any other further comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. You got that, city clerk? Everyone's in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have request for garden space for community pantry from Bethany Paul. And as we're all aware, we have, you know, some vacant lots that would be an opportunity. So what's the wish of council on this one? I'll just quickly go over it. I'd like to inquire about heading up a community take-as-you-need garden for the city of Estevan. As prices for produce and gas rise, I know many families are struggling to provide healthy meals for their families. Lettuce, tomatoes, onions, potatoes, corn beans, cukes, zucchini are all very easy to grow in our climate. I believe we do have a community garden for hobbyists, but I'm unaware of any garden grown specifically for families in need. The biggest hang-up is having the land. Everything else I can source from the wonderful community. I can even get donations for seeds, plants, and soil from stores. Local farmers and volunteers won't be an issue to maintain the garden. Perhaps some local businesses would like to sponsor this and provide some funding to support the cause. I know that Sector 1, the company I work for, would be interested. Ideally, we would have a piece of land accessible to those who are not able to drive or walk long distances. We would need open access to it from May 1st to October 31st annually. I think it would be nice, after the garden is established, to include a community pantry at the same location, so that people who come to take something can leave an item in the free pantry. So I guess that would mean take one and leave something else. The community fridge could be accessible all year round. I know this would be a beautiful community project that would bring people together. I look forward to hearing your response. If it interests the council, I will put together a more detailed proposal. Thank you for your time. Bethany Paul. So what's the wish of council on this one? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I'd be interested to hear a more detailed plan before we move forward picking a location. One of the portions that she wrote in there is that the piece of land would have to be accessible to those who are not able to drive or walk long distance. One thing about Estevan is we have a very diverse population. So we have people of all income levels living in all areas of the city. So I think it'd be really hard to find exactly where that accessible land would be without knowing who's participating in this. And so maybe what it takes is to have a small committee get together to start this, to find out which area of town they find is going to be the most interactive with it, and go from there. There's a lot of different spots that we could do it. Maybe if they have enough interest, maybe there's enough interest for more than one spot, or maybe they start small first. But I think I would be interested in having a more detailed proposal and have the actual participants maybe come to council or put a package together for council, listing exactly what volunteers, who they have, and maybe the people that they're planning to feed would be the people that actually volunteer and work towards this, too. So I think it's a great idea. I just think I'd like to see a more detailed proposal before we pick a spot.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Vroba. That makes sense. I mean, if we have the interest in an area where we have an infill, obviously, that's where we would do that. And I think it's no different than the property we already have now. It took quite a few years to get it up to speed, and wow, it looks great now, and they've really taken off.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's opportunity here for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so go ahead, Counselor Sernick.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, if we could get more information from them, or, you know what I mean, we could also provide them, the 4th Street location would be central to everybody. I think it would be almost better to let them get at it for a year, show us what they can do, and go from there, because we can talk and they can have plans all we want, but, you know what I mean, it's action and putting stuff into the dirt, which is what's really going to count here, so.
Good point.
I would almost, you know what I mean, look at, you know what I mean, which property, and again, just throwing this out there right now, would be the 4th Street location. It's central. There's no residents on it or anything like that right now, so plowing and tilling shouldn't be much of an issue. And, you know, go from there, so.
Absolutely.
And just give it a year trial and see where it goes from there.
Yeah, good point, because they'll have to have the availability of water. And I know the one that we have in place now, over time, they built everything up so that you don't have to bend over, and people with disabilities, they would find that difficult. But again, as these move forward, they end up being a very nice location and actually an attribute to that area of the community, so it could be a good thing. So I guess what we'll do is ask this young lady for more information. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. And maybe to solve the accessible thing is that maybe we designate a spot for them, and then we tell them they need to find various spots in the city that is a drop location for these vegetables and fresh fruit and everything else, say, various churches in town, or maybe the family center for the people who maybe can't get to certain areas of town. And maybe that could be a solution, as opposed to having everyone go to one garden.
Good point. So I can tell we, you know, have to flesh this out. Go ahead, Counselor Wolliser.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counselor Vroba that it would be nice to meet with more stakeholders to see where the support lies for this project, as it is likely going to require regular monitoring, fence likely, so more than temporary solutions. Other communities do have gardens like this, but they would have probably the involvement of the Salvation Army or the existing community gardens who have experience to lend. Even the Warm Welcome Kitchen would be able to more accurately reflect where those demands are in our community. So I'd be very interested in meeting with a larger group before committing to a location.
Okay, good point. So perhaps what we can do is ask this young lady to come forward to council with any interest in parties, maybe the next open council, and we could start going down that road. And yeah, it probably should be fenced, because I know we have a lot of rabbits in town that would take advantage of that if it wasn't fenced, and even the odd moose and deer, so. Mind you, moose are probably going to go where they want to go, right, city clerk? Anyway, it's probably a good idea to get more people involved. Any other comments? If not, then, if that's okay, we'll just ask her to come forward at the next meeting and open with some friends, and Counselor Vroba?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'll just ask that it gets tabled till next meeting, but I also agree with Counselor Sernick that it should be moved to, especially the next meeting, if she can move quickly, because with a garden, she's going to want to get it in quickly, so.
Absolutely, okay. So city clerk, did you want a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so have we got a second or for that? Thank you. Counselor Wolliser, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from Suris Valley Museum, request for historical figure plaque by Parks Canada. So who's on that board? I think, yeah, Counselor Wolliser, did you want, I guess I could read a couple pages, but you could probably cut to the chase a lot quicker.
Yes, your worship. Suris Valley Museum Board is quite excited with this opportunity. Parks Canada reached out to them and indicated that they were one of the final contenders for this historical monument, and that because of Hinn's exploration along the Suris River and some major contributions to the early planning of things like the Deaf and Baker Lake, that we would be an appropriate location. The museum thought, because all of the cost, upkeep, and maintenance falls to Parks Canada, that this would be a very positive attribute for the museum, but as it's a city-owned building, wanted the city's blessing to proceed with the next stage of working with Parks Canada to bring this.
Good, well, thank you very much for that explanation. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. Just wondering, do we do any kind of, send it to the Truth and Reconciliation or Aboriginal community to see that they've accepted this person as someone that, you know, that should be honored? And I just wondered if that has been done, or is it something that we do before we okay that?
Yeah, that's a fair comment. I don't know, Counselor Wolliser, with your board, do you do that type of thing, like run that by, or?
We have not, but we could inquire with Parks Canada. They do have scholars that participate in the creation of these plaques.
Okay.
So we can certainly inquire about if that reconciliation act has been completed.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking, because it's coming from Parks Canada, Counselor Clark, that that's probably already been looked at and approved, but we can definitely check that out. Okay, thank you. So have we got a motion? Were you making a motion, then, Counselor Wolliser, to move forward with this?
I can make a motion that we, yeah, that we proceed with additional conversations with Parks Canada, and we can bring it back once there's an answer with the Truth and Reconciliation portion of it.
Okay, thank you. So have we got a second or for that? We'll table it for now, get more information, and then come back. Counselor Ford, okay? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Bruins, some meeting minutes of February 22nd. Do we have a motion for these? Thank you, Counselor Ford. Seconded by Counselor Sernick, thank you. Counselor Ford, anything you'd like to bring up?
Thanks, your worship. Just that we did really great. If anyone hasn't seen the news lately, we're moving into round two of the playoffs, which start on Friday and Saturday this week, I believe, so tickets will go on sale online. I think they're actually on sale today already for season ticket holders, and then those seats will open up. But yeah, if you check online, you should be able to get tickets for round two of the playoffs, and we're just really excited for it.
Okay, thank you very much, and it's very exciting hockey, and we look forward to the Bruins going all the way. So hopefully, everyone can get their tickets for the Friday/Saturday game. Thank you. Did we, I guess, did we get that motion?
Counselor Ford and Counselor Sernick.
Okay, good. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, Written Reports of Committees, here we have Estevan Public Library. Could we have a motion to accept that, please? Counselor Wolliser, seconded by Counselor Clark. All in favor? Carrie, Counselor Wolliser, anything you'd like to add?
The Public Library hosted a mini golf in the library with book-themed and book-created golf course this weekend, and the community showed up and supported it. So just a big thanks to the community for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from Engineering, the Water Main Replacement, Kohale and Lynn Crescent Proposal. And I understand, city manager, that our good city engineer went personally, door-to-door, and answered any questions, and was very happy with the response. Yep. So what's the wish of council on this? Hopefully, to move forward? Counselor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I will make that motion to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by, thank you, Counselor Frank. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from Tax Assessment, 1120 Valley Street, request for tax abatements. What's the wish of council on this? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. Basically, I would recommend that we do not abate any of the taxes and go against Sama's recommendations. I think it's quite clear in there that the taxes were not appealed in the years that he's requesting abatement for, so it's already been adjusted in 2021 based on Sama, and I think we should just let Sama do their job. That's what we hire them to do, and so I would recommend that we do not proceed with any abatement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba, and you're right. Usually, after people appeal, we abide by the appeal moving forward. We have never gone back, so I think that's a fair recommendation, and you're making that motion?
I would, because I also served as a secretary on a board of revision, and exactly, it was basically unheard of that anybody would go back, because if you did that, you'd be opening up a can of worms for everybody to say.
That ever appealed.
That's right, for anyone and anyone. So everybody has that right to appeal their taxes each and every year. If they want to, they can appeal, and that letter is sent, the information is sent to them. So he did appeal in 2021 on this property, and this property has been reduced, it says, so agreement to adjust has been made, and I think we need to follow that agreement based on the date it was started, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Counselor Sernick. Any further questions or comments? If not, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sernick?
I just did have a question on, like, I get everything there, but just kind of curious into how something like this gets, you know, changed from a school under construction to multifamily units? Like, does Sama make that call? Like, if, you know, if the city has never approved, you know, that the place is done yet, like, how does it get changed from construction phase into, like, the multifamily units, as it did in 2017?
Yeah, I think that's a fair comment. City manager, I think that would be, Sama would have been involved in that, correct?
Yeah, your worship, Counselor Sernick. I'll have to look and see what actually triggered that transition. Yeah, I don't, Trudy, did you have any further information on that?
Not for exactly when that happened, yes.
But yeah, we'll get back to you on that, Counselor Sernick. That's a fair question. Were you, you seconded that as well, right? Okay, thank you. Any further questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Fire Chief, the fire report from January and February. And city clerk, do you need a motion for each, or are you okay with both? You're okay with both? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Counselor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Introduction of Bylaws, we have none this evening. Public hearings and reports, we have none this evening. Giving notice, none. Motions from committee, none. Consideration of bylaws, none this evening. Inquiries, Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. City manager, there's a, I think we talked about it last year, but again, it was from a water break that happened, I believe, at a residence on the 1100 block of 4th Street, and so it's just down the street from here. So the pile of rock is just, it's on the city property portion, and I was just wondering if we could maybe, if it's up to us to scatter them, if we could scatter them, just so, because it's on our main street also, and it's a big pile of rocks there, so. I know the snow just melted, and it might still cover it again, but.
What was the address again?
I can get the exact address for you, and I'll send that to the city manager, but yeah.
Please.
And then, the other thing is, we had our Creighton Lodge fundraiser this weekend and raised a lot of money for a great cause, and so thank you to everyone, and thank you to the city of Estevan for supporting that.
Thank you, Counselor Vroba. I know you did yeoman's work at that. You were up till 5, 6:00 in the morning, so.
Just 4:00.
Oh, just 4:00? Well, that's still pretty late for me. So thank you for all of your efforts to make it such a success, and everyone in council. I know Counselor Wolliser did yeoman's work in the background as well, so thank you all so thank you all for your efforts on that, whoever else contributed. Counselor Clerk?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, just a big shout out to all the volunteers. We had a lot of events on in the city this, that's, just on the weekend. Had a gun show, they had curling, they had hockey. And I know that takes a lot of people to make that happen, and it's just so appreciative to see that happening and people coming out and enjoying it. Thank you.
Absolutely, Counselor Clerk. And we've always said, you know, we have the best volunteers in Western Canada, and I truly believe that. And they always come to the table to help out the community, so that's much appreciated. Counselor Wallezer?
Thank you, your worship. As the snow melts, there's quite a lot of litter and debris blowing through our parks right now. And just as the snow melted to reveal all of those treasures, the snow has melted around the receptacles. So a big thank you to all the people that I've seen out scooping masks and garbage and putting it where it belongs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you to all the people that are helping to keep our community clean. Thank you. Counselor Ford?
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sernick?
Thank you, your worship. Just on the, talking again about appealing your tax assessments, currently, right now, our city for this upcoming year started on March 23rd and goes till April 22nd. So this is kind of, to appeal anything on your tax assessment has to be done before then, so get it done.
Yeah, that's a good point. Counselor Sernick, thank you for that. It's a very tight window. So if people are interested in doing that, please move forward with that. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Frank.
You know, I just, I'll give a quick shout out to our roads and drainage crew, because the roads, there's very few potholes and just look amazing, which is a true testament to what cleaning them all winter long does. So thanks to those, to our hardworking staffs.
Yes, thank you for that, and we do, we're very fortunate. We have a great staff, and they do a tremendous job. People don't realize sometimes all the work they do in the background, so absolutely, we thank them for that. Thank you.
Nobody recognizes them when the streets are clean, but they should recognize them when there's potholes, so I'll make sure we recognize them while they're clean, so.